Everyone, welcome to Portland City Hall. This is the June 6th afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Carla, please call the rule.
Fish?
Here.
Hardesty, Udaley, Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. I don't think we need to read the rules this afternoon. We only have one item on our agenda. Carla, could you please read it?
Yes. Item 549, accept the 2019 annual report on Sister City activities.
Colleagues, today we have the opportunity of hearing from Portland's Sister City Associations as part of their annual required but always highly anticipated report to the Portland City Council. I hope that through this presentation, the council and the public have an opportunity to learn more about the important work of our Sister City Association. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Cheeto Dilueo, International Relations Associate of the Office of Government Relations, to introduce Portland's Sister City Associations. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you.
And by the way, while you're getting situated, Commissioner Hardesty and I were in a meeting, and I apologize that it ran over, and she'll be here momentarily.
That is perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Cheeto Dilueo, and I serve as the International Relations Director for the City of Portland. As part of my work, I support the Portland Sister Cities. I commit a group of volunteers who work together to put on incredible variety of intercultural events that help us to better engage with our international community. Before inviting my colleagues to speak, I would like to provide some background on the Sister City program. Portland Sister Cities are a member of Sister Cities International, a nonprofit organization that was initiated by Eisenhower in 1956 to foster mutual friendship and understanding internationally. True to the spirit of Sister Cities International, Portland's nine Sister Cities and one Friendship City Association help us to facilitate many cultural, educational, and economic exchanges. These ties can be felt through cultural landmarks such as the Lanzu Garden and the Portland Japanese Garden, but have also come to include activities such as the Language Emergent Programs, sustainability conferences, and annual cultural performances, and much, much more. The Sister City Initiative has greatly enriched our local community. Today, the leadership of Portland Sister City Associations are pleased to present their annual required reports, as the mayor mentioned, on their efforts and activities undertaken in the 2018 calendar year. Thank you for taking the time to listen and accept this report. First up, I'd like to introduce Brian Hoffert, President of the Portland-Ashkelon Sister City Association, to present. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I'm just been placed into the position as President of the Ashkelon Sister City Association about two months ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Super excited, looking forward to some really good things for the year ahead. In the 2018, we continued to build the Board of Directors and work towards several fundraising ideas, as well as following up with the Multnomah University Matchmaking Research Project in identifying companies in Portland and Ashkelon that specialize in new breakthrough electronic, environmental, and medical technologies, and then creating partnerships between these businesses that would also benefit our association. Over the past 30 years, it's been quite some time since we've had a delegation traveling to Israel and Ashkelon, and we're looking forward to meeting the new mayor, Tomar Glam, hopefully in February of 2020. So, we're looking at trying to do a trip over there in February of 2020. And in that trip, we'll visit the surrounding areas of Israel, American businesses such as Intel and Microsoft, and explore partnerships that could work between local businesses here such as OHSU, PSU, and other institutional, educational institutions. This tour is primarily of local business leaders to help strengthen our Board of Directors and secure the needed funding for our new matchmaking initiative. We also will continue to serve Mayor Ted Wheeler and other Sister City Association Presidents in co-chairing our monthly Portland Sister Cities Coalition meeting in the Rose Room at City Hall, and managing the annual Rose Festival Sister City Association reception at City Hall, and other annual Rose, and other local benefactors. Serving our neighbors, we'll continue to work on a leadership development in connection with the City of Portland and Ashkelon, as well as maintaining our new website, Portland Sister City Coalition, and our Facebook page. Activities that we've presented in 2019 are we've reached out to the Ashkelon Sister Cities of Baltimore and Sacramento, and we're looking forward to doing some joint ventures with them to reach out to the city and support both them and the City of Ashkelon in efforts that they're making through the community, doing community outreach, and then also establishing some business ties. We're also looking at doing several fundraising things throughout the 2019 to strengthen our association and then also bring in more people to serve on our board, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners for having us here. I'm Philip Potestio. I am the President of the Portland Bologna Sister City Association. Bologna is a city in north-central Italy of about 500,000 people. About 100,000 of those are students at the university. This is our 15th anniversary this year. Our youth exchange with 10 students leaves for a 15-day homestay next week, at the end of next week. We spend much of our time during the year raising money for this program. Our Sagra in November was a tremendous success by our standards in a silent auction we ran this spring, just a couple of weeks ago at Club Piazza No Dance netted us almost $2,000, which was a very nice boon. Our incredible board comprised of all volunteers, besides being a joy to work with, also takes on incredible responsibility and increasing responsibility.
I see you wasted no time getting to a position of authority in Bologna. Good for you.
Nick, it looks like he's got the right form of government, too.
You've infiltrated the local government. Well done. Well done.
Thank you. But this board has been really a tremendous group to work with, and a year of flux in the board membership, and our executive director, we've come through with flying colors. Last October, three board members and our youth exchange coordinator, Emeritus, visited Bologna and not only were toured and feted, but also formulated plans and initiatives. After meeting with General Consul Lorenzo Ortona in early spring, he, by the way, takes a great interest in our group, he's stationed in San Francisco, a plan for celebrating Portland Bologna's 15th year anniversary has evolved. Consul Ortona has enlisted the help of the Italian Cultural Institute and its director, Anna Maria Di Giorgio, who has helped arrange an art exhibit to come to Portland. This exhibit, 60 illustrations of the famous children's books of Gianni Rodari, who is celebrating his 100th anniversary this year. He's a renowned author, and he has incredible illustrations in his books. And also in Bologna, we also have the, an incredible children's book fair. So, we are taking an exhibit from that book fair that appeared originally there, it's just ended, and we'll have it at the Portland Art Museum in September. And thanks to Commissioner Udaley's office, some of the arrangements that were made to get to the Portland Art Museum. We will have, for the first time because of that and because of our 15th anniversary, a visit from the mayor of Bologna, Mayor Marola. And he's also the Director of International Affairs, will be here in September. So, they'll join Consul Ortona and Director Di Giorgio and other dignitaries to celebrate the exhibit and our 15 years of partnership in September. We're also very excited that Corey Hokendorf, who's the future Prime Minister, the next Prime Minister of the Royal Rosarians, will be leading her Prime Minister's excursion to Bologna in October of 2020. We've been doing a lot of work with businesses. I just met with a woman who sells bottle caps, of all things. She, in Bologna, there's a company called Pelencore, let me get this right, Pelencore, which is a bottle cap manufacturer, and she was, has just spent, she's here still, spent days going around to different craft breweries in Oregon and, you know, selling her wares, I guess. One thing that I, you might see on the slides is a picture of grape stompers. Our youth exchange loves to join the Festa Italiana in the grape stomping competition.
What, are you cheerleading?
Yeah, I'm cheerleading. I'm in the back there screaming my head off. I should, this has been a sad news, after 27 years of Festa Italiana being at Pioneer Square in August, it's not going to be there this year. It's not going to be happening. It's a very sad end of a partnership that started in 1992. We are looking for ways to have fest activities, and Portland Bologna is a big part of that, but it's going to look different. And unfortunately, it came down to finances where we couldn't afford the square. So, I guess there isn't a 27-year get-one-free policy. I was kind of hoping for that, but, so anyway, we're looking for different ways to put on that festival, and Portland Bologna is always an enthusiastic supporter of that. Thanks for having us again, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Rick Lambertson. I'm the Treasurer of the Portland-Guadalajara Sister City Association, and I'll be representing our President, Yvette Flores Schmidt, who can't be here today.
Thank you.
2018 was a great year. We accomplished many things, including celebrating our 35th anniversary as a Sister City. Established in 1983, we commemorated this milestone with a rose bush planting ceremony with the Royal Rosarians at Washington Park. The Sister City was established as a direct result of the Royal Rosarian, of a Royal Rosarian visitation, and they continue to be valued partner in all of our events. Our 2018 Cinco de Mayo Fiesta went very well. We estimated that we had more than 100,000 attendees this year, or last year, and we're very proud to produce an annual festival that the citizens of Portland support and that brings substantial added income to the city and the businesses downtown. Also, at the Fiesta, with the thanks of the United States Customs and Immigration Service, 49 people were sworn in from 37 different countries as new citizens at our annual naturalization ceremony. If you've never been there, we'd love to have you, and it's an amazing event to see that happen. The proceeds of our Cinco de Mayo Fiesta and other events that we host and organize during the year help us support many organizations that I can't name all of today, but one of the important ones is the Barbero Firefighter Academy in Guadalajara, where the coordination, with the coordination of members from the Portland Fire Department, volunteer firefighters from all Latin American countries are trained with life-saving techniques. We know for a fact that this saves lives every year, and we are also providing funding for a school of children and young adults with autism for low-income families. We've traveled with the Royal Rosarians to Guadalajara last year, where we participated in their biggest parade, it was quite fun, the Fiesta de Octubre. With Rosarian support, a rose bush was planted in Guadalajara to commemorate our friendship. Also, there was a memorandum of understanding that was signed between the University of Guadalajara and Portland State University, hopefully to garner educational exchanges between the two cities. Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, we would like to extend you all an invitation to travel to Guadalajara with us. We'd love to have you and to support our organization to continue this friendship for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the report.
Thank you. When's the trip?
In October.
October what?
Of this year. I'll let you know.
Please.
We'll make sure you're invited.
Might be.
Love to have you along. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Mayor Wheeler, council members, I'm Mike Bostwick, President of the Portland-Gauchoan Sister City Association, and we started out the year with the registration of our dragonboat teams, and in February, we had a wonderful trip to Gauchoan for the Dragon Boat, excuse me, Lantern Festival, we have the dragonboat one. Okay, at that time, we visited Shuda High School, which is amazing when you walk in, there's 6,000 students cheering and greeting you and everything, and at that time, we provided, with the help of the Portland Rose Festival Foundation and the Royal Rosarians, $2,500 in scholarships for the students at Shuda High School to come here for the Rose Festival. Excuse me. And we met with members of the Gauchoan City Council and city government, and the entire new group of officials. They had elections last year, and we had all new, a new mayor, a new council chairman, and all their head members of their divisions and different bureaus and stuff were all new, so it was a very interesting conversation with all of them. We were very well received, and they, and I look forward to having a long, productive relationship with all the new people over there in Kaohsiung. When we got back, we started off our dragonboat season with the eye-dotting ceremony, at which time, most of the city of Portland knows that, you know, when they see the boats out on the river, it's, you know, Rose Festival time. So it's very enjoyable to know that. Yesterday, we greeted Shuda High School and a delegation from Kaohsiung in Portland along with the Royal Rosarians. The races will be starting on Saturday and Sunday. We have 57 teams this year, a couple up from last year, and three new teams. We have some special events. We have a high school team where several of the high schools can get together, do a challenge for other high schools. And also, we are going to continue having a college/university challenge, where teams have made up from Oregon State, Oregon, University of Washington. We'll have a couple of days of practice, and then they challenge each other on a special race. And we hope to continue that and build on that. It's hard to get some of them together sometimes. So also, on this Sunday, we will present to a local Chinese student, or Chinese descent, a $1,500 scholarship for their college education. And we also are trying to get more involved with other Chinese organizations in the Portland area this year. And in relation to that, we also started our, planning our trip to Kaohsiung next spring for their Lantern Festival, which will be on February 8, 2020, and you are all invited to join us for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Ellis. I'm President of the Portland Khabaros Sister City Association. The photos you'll be seeing were taken last week. Our delegation was there the entire week. And Khabaros is located in the Russian Far East, right above Manchuria. It's located in the confluence of two rivers, one of which, I think, is, one of the photos shows one of those rivers, the Amur, which is as large as Colombia, and the smaller one, Usuri, which is like the Walamet. And Khabaros is a cultural and educational center in that area of Russia. We sat down with the mayor and deputy mayors and had a very cordial exchange of topics, including various joint projects that we're working on. The last time I was here to address you was in January, when we had the rhythmic gymnast here, and led by Jean McCormick, who's on our board and in the audience, and she is, and she's going back with her own group next summer. And she's also an expert in telehealth. And we went to a pediatrics hospital that gives free service to any pregnant lady throughout the Khabaros region. That region is huge, it's larger than Oregon. And we hope to bring the director to Portland and to have him participate in a conference. One of our other members of the delegation works here in, at City Hall, Irene Konef, who was instrumental in bringing about the Slavic and Eastern European Heritage Week proclamation. And we presented a framed photocopy of that proclamation to the mayor, and Irene, who's fluent in Russian, explained the whole, what the proclamation was about and all the Russian speakers we have in this area, and it got, we had a press conference afterwards, and the media really picked up on it. So we got good coverage on that. You'll see a photo of the, where the Olympia rhythmic gymnasts work out. They're also building a new baseball stadium, and they want to do a baseball exchange, and we're in the process of getting a grant through the State Department to pull that off, hopefully next summer. There's a conference that's going to be held in Khabaros, the Russian-American Pacific Partnership, RAP, coming up at the end of this month, and it's about doing business with Russia, especially in the Russian Far East. And the conference has been held in Portland before, this year it's in Khabaros. And I just talked with the Oregon Business Alliance people, both of whom have studied Russian, one of whom recognized me as a teacher back in the 70s, and we'll be working with them to identify businesses who might be interested in doing business in the Russian Far East. Russia is, our sister city is open for business, despite any problems that we have on the national level. We also, one of the photos is meeting with students at gymnasium number five. They have an ongoing exchange program with Russian language students at Franklin High School. And there is going to be, you see a drawing by a child from, a fifth grader from Kelly School, which is where the Russian immersion program starts and ends up at Franklin High School. And Khabaros is wanting to send a number of children's artwork to display here in City Hall, and I'll be working with Cheeto on getting that done. And lastly, you see a rock band. We've been able to get grants from the State Department through the consulate in Vladivostok and the embassy in Moscow, to bring three bands in the last four years, two Khabaros for their festival, which is the week before our festival here. And we have sent a blues band, a bluegrass band, and this year, a sizzling rock and roll band, and they were received very well, called Otis Heat. They will be performing, along with a band that Khabaros is sending to us, they'll be performing next fall, the first Sunday in November at the old church, and we'll let you know about that. So, all in all, a really great visit, and we do a number of things here in Portland as well, including working closely with the restaurant Kochka during holiday celebrations. So, thank you.
Alan, can I just, Mayor, a couple of quick questions. How, how long have you been the head of the Khabaros Sister City Association?
Well, I've been with the Sister City Association almost, almost since its start, which was in 1988, and I've been president for the last 10 or 12 years.
I think, I'm just reflecting on, I think you and Philip are the two senior members of the delegation. And I, thank you for taking on this assignment.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I know Phil and I are, I'm trying not to be czar for eternity.
Apparently, there are no-term limits, so, you know, we're going to keep you for as long as we can. Without, without checking with my bureau, let me just say that Walker Stadium at Lenz would be honored to host an exhibition game between a visiting baseball team and maybe the Pickles, or whatever we could arrange. So if we could get some additional information on that as soon as possible, we could sketch out potentially a exhibition game, and I think Walker would be a fantastic location.
Baseball's become very popular over there.
And finally, would you, I ask you this almost every year, because I love the answer, but would you remind us, why is this, this city sort of in the far end of the country, sort of located in the middle of nowhere, why is it the jazz capital of Russia?
You know, it was a Pacific Rim thing, and trying to find a city in that area, and Mayor Bud Clark, Commissioner Mike Lindberg, and Portland State Professor Earl Molander, and Sandra Rosengrant, Sandra Freels, professor at Portland State, went there and went to various cities and visited this one, and just, they were charmed, and they thought it, they had a lot of things in common.
Good, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Afternoon.
My name is Karen Hansen, and I am the President of the Portland Mutari Sister City Association, and I'm challenging myself today to not read off of a page and stick to two minutes. And so, quickly, our sister city was established on December 18, 1991, and we've gone through a lot of ups and downs and changes of what our missions are and all that, but ultimately, we are a sister city that's commitment is to humanitarian assistance to this city of our friends in Mutari. And we have built a health clinic, and we have supported a school, an orphanage school, amongst some other things, and all of a sudden, we kind of have found ourselves kind of lost with our vision and where we're going. So we've been reevaluating, seeing how we might redirect some of our energies, and our most recent meeting to do that reevaluation, we came across a realization that part of our problem, which is no problem at all, is that the two primary organizations we've been supporting have become self-sustaining. That's the best thing you could, what for an organization. The Anglican Church has taken over the orphanage school, and the government has taken over the health clinic. There are still, there is still lots of need within the country and within the city, and so we're trying to figure out where we fit and how we can support people. We are still buying the panels from FASSO, which is Family Aid Support Organization, and buying them directly from the women that create them and their micro-business, and then taking them, selling them, and then getting money back that we then send back and may also send to other organizations that express need. So we're just trying to figure it out. But one wonderful thing that I want to mention in closing that has helped reinvigorate a lot of my passion for the people in Zimbabwe that none of us have ever seen, haven't seen face-to-face in many years, because we haven't been able to go there and they haven't been able to come here, is the wonders of social media. We now have WhatsApp, and it has like opened up the friendships all over again. And so now, we can feel the love with each other, send pictures back and forth. So all of the pictures that I sent you are pictures off of WhatsApp, and our friend Veronica over there sending us, showing us the wonderful things that are happening over there. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Honorable Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, my name is Michael Bacon, and as the President of the Portland Sapporo Sister City Association, I'm honored and humbled to provide you our annual brief report. Unlike Karen, I am going to stick to my paper in order to keep to two or three minutes, and because this is, as you presumably know, our 60th anniversary, and there are just a few speaking engagements that I'm being prepared for and have lots of remarks to make. So we are excited to be celebrating our 60th anniversary. The sister city relationship between Sapporo, Japan, and Portland is one of the longest-standing sister city relationships in the US, beginning in 1959, and continues with regular, plentiful, and meaningful exchanges that have built an incredibly strong bond of friendship between our two cities. In our recommitment to this enduring friendship, the PSSCA drafted a new strategic plan with a new mission statement that reads, "To foster and promote friendship and mutual understanding through exchanges and interactions between the people of Portland and Sapporo to build a foundation for a more peaceful and sustainable world," which I think connects very well to what Mayor Wheeler shared just before this. We also held a competition to design a new logo, which you can see, if you go back one slide, in the, two slides, maybe, yes, there at the top, in the center of this first slide at the top. The symbol of star, Polaris, is found in many of Sapporo's cultural sites, such as the Sapporo Clock Tower, former Hokkaido Government Office, and the old Sapporo Beer Factory, representing the development of Hokkaido. The bridge is inspired by Portland's new pedestrian bridge, the Tilikum Crossing. The water below represents the Walamet River in Portland and the Toyohira River in Sapporo. Combined together, this logo celebrates 60 years of sister city relationship and expresses our association's mission, bridging people between Portland and Sapporo to create a peaceful and sustainable world. Yesterday, we welcomed Sapporo Mayor Akimoto and a 90-member 60th Anniversary Memorial Delegation from Sapporo. The mayor and delegation will be here until this Sunday, joining the people of Portland in celebrating the Rose Festival and our 60th anniversary. As you will see in the slides, there are many events planned in this short five-day period. However, I would like to just highlight a particularly special event happening this afternoon, which you all are, of course, invited, and Mayor Wheeler will be speaking there, the rededication of the Sapporo Peace Bell at the Oregon Convention Center. 30 years ago, the people of Portland were given a gift. The city of Sapporo commissioned a beautiful bell to be presented to the city of Portland in celebration of the 30th anniversary. Then Mayor Bud Clark accepted this gift on behalf of the city of Portland, and shortly thereafter, the bell landed in its new home in the northeast corner of the Oregon Convention Center. In the spirit of a President Eisenhower City Sister City Initiative following World War II, this gift came to symbolize friendship and peace with common citizens ringing in times of concern. Subsequently, the bell became known as the Sapporo Peace Bell. Today, we have been given another gift. The movement of this bell from its original home up north of here, of that place, to the new southeast location provides an amazing opportunity to bring us together to reflect upon and acknowledge the past, to celebrate the present 60th anniversary, and to envision the future of in our recommitment to this friendship that is inclusive of all people in our vibrant and innovative cities. As we move into the future, the vision of Portland/Sapporo Sister City Association is to connect all peoples, all peoples, past, present, and future from Sapporo and Portland. As part of this endeavor, this afternoon, we will welcome members of our local tribes of the Portland area, as well as our special Ainu, the indigenous people, first peoples of northern Japan, a people that were not recognized until just this January as the indigenous people of northern Japan. Furthermore, in collaboration with the Portland Japanese Garden and Portland State University's Native American Student and Community Center, the Oregon Convention Center, and Metro, worked to include first plants in the surrounding garden, first plants from both sides of the Pacific, and welcome posts carved by indigenous artisans from both sides of the Pacific, Chinook and Ainu. The welcome posts will be dedicated in August, after their current exhibition finishes at the Portland Japanese Garden. Our Sapporo Peace Bell rededication ceremony this afternoon also includes a land acknowledgement and protocol performed by a canoe family. Please join us at 4:30 today, as we rededicate the bell in a recommitment to this longstanding friendship and a future that is inclusive of all people on both sides of the Pacific Ocean. I also would like to extend the invitation that this October, busy October for you, is, we will be taking our 60th anniversary delegation with Mayor Wheeler to Sapporo on October 22 through the 27th, so please join us if you can. Finally, I would like to recognize the incredible efforts of my fellow board members and our partners in Sapporo. The relationship thrives because of the talents, hard work, and dedication of many. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and City Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Starkey. I'm the President of the Portland Sujo Sister City Association, so we're the other PSSCA. 2018 was a busy year. Portland and Sujo celebrated 30 years of sister city relations with more activities following Mayor Wheeler's delegation to Sujo in April. Five events over a weekend in July were attended by four delegations from Sujo, and included a poster exhibit at City Hall highlighting Sujo's journey over the past 40 years. The 90-piece Sujo Chinese Orchestra, we were honored to hear at PSU's Lincoln Hall. It was amazing. The rose bed dedication at Washington Park Rose Garden, where Mayor Wheeler and Mr. Guje planted and watered rosebush in the bed dedicated by Portland Parks and Recreation Department. At Hoyt Arboretum, Chinese forest, an osmanthus tree was planted, a fitting complement to the tree planting ceremony in Sujo. This tree is the twin of a tree that's been planted in the Lansu Garden, and both were propagated from a big old osmanthus that was in the Lansu Garden until recently. So it was a very fun event, good photo ops, and always a good opportunity to see our leaders at work with shovels and watering cans.
It was painful, but at the end of the day, we all got the job done.
You looked like you were having fun, so that was, you know, you were smiling.
I have an osmanthus that I got from the Lansu Garden, it's planted in my garden.
Oh, I want one. We'll talk. The 30th anniversary weekend events culminated with our Evening Under the Stars Gala at the Lansu Chinese Garden. For the first time, we featured prominent artists from both Sujo and Portland. Previously, we had just had Sujo artists, and so it seemed very fitting to have Portland artists too. Two high-level delegations followed in September and November to attend an environmental seminar and a round tree, roundtable discussion, both organized by Business Oregon. PSSCA wrapped up 2018 with our annual dinner in installation of new officers and our annual strategic planning meeting. Based on goals set, we made changes to our bylaws, created an advisory council, and set the date for our next event for May 23, 2019. We were honored to have Mayor Wheeler and the Chinese Consul General Ambassador Wong from San Francisco attend. Speakers addressed the importance of Speakers addressed the importance of collaboration between our cities and the benefits this relationship has had to Portland. I mean, we were in the Lansu Garden, so we could have just stopped right there, you know? It's an amazing feature. We also awarded our annual Nukum Wong Memorial Scholarship of $500 to a Chinese student at PSU. PSSCA has had a leading role in fostering the nine sister-city partnerships Portland has with Suzhou schools. In February, there were 78 students and 10 teachers from five Suzhou schools visiting their Portland sister schools and doing homestays. That's 88 new people introduced to Portland in a very personal way. Last Thursday, Hossford's eighth graders presented their China Research Residency capstone projects based on their two-week experiences in Suzhou. These are our future leaders, citizens, employees, and employers, and they are so confident. The Woodstock third graders' Portland-Suzhou Bridges mural beautifully embodies the spirit of our sister-city relationship. The sister-city associations are bridges of friendship between our cities, one event, one delegation, one student at a time. It's what we can do on an individual, personal level to build a future where we're not dealing with foreigners, but with friends, people we know, like, and trust. Thank you all for your strong support of our sister-city associations.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Good afternoon. I don't think I can speak that fast. I'm gonna try. My name is Miyoung Maguire, M-A-G-U-I-R-E. I noticed my spelling kind of got mixed up there. Ten days ago, group of six, we just came back from Ulsan Sister City for our Rose Parade, Rose Festival in Ulsan. And we have two Royal Rosarian, Kathy Fassnel and Craig Jokensen. I'd like to share three things with you guys today, and the first thing is our Rose Festival in Ulsan, to see all these faces of people. Finally, they know how to stop and smell the roses, and the children looking at Royal Rosarian with their uniform, the white, the flower, the light, and getting little roses sticker, their light, the face just light up, and I'm like, wow. I'm really thankful for Royal Rosarian, take their time there, put everything forward to really share the rose. So I really appreciate Royal Rosarian for that. That's why we went, and we also, we visited Portland Rose Bed that we dedicated two years ago, and it's blossoming beautifully. They have a beautiful sign, I hope that we have that picture, beautiful sign, and how far distance from Portland to Ulsan City is. And also, there's a picture of Nicholson, Martin Nicholson, thank you, Martin Nicholson dedicating plaque, actually, he took all his time and cut the wood, and he designed Portland logo and Ulsan logo, and that's gonna be at, in Ulsan, Poland Arboretum. And right now, they're really working on it. We were there, took picture, that was awesome. They're gonna open it, they're gonna be completed by end of this year, and hoping that they'll be open and dedicated by next year, Rose Parade, which is in June, I mean, May. I was, I'm really looking forward to maybe Mayor Ted Wheeler can able to join, that'd be awesome.
Or maybe somebody else will go next time, right?
That's right. That's right, of course, of course. Thank you. And whoever visit, and definitely I'll give you one of this, the scarf. So lastly, I want to just talk to you about the scarf really quick, and everybody saw how wonderful it is, and we see the Ulsan City logo on one side, and the other side we have a Poland logo, and connected by the roses, and that's our sister-city. And we have honorable member of our sister-city association in Korea, in Ulsan. I designed this, and I was gonna print it in Korea because it's cheaper, and he just paid for everything, and he print hundred of this for us, 100, and donated to us. At the lastly, actually, what I want to really share this is that my husband also came this visit, and he found a box of letter from his father, written over 60-some years ago, and he was Korean War Veterans. And the letter was about, he was waiting in Okinawa, the boat he took, and where he landed, which is by Ulsan, and Busan and Ulsan port, and went all the way to Imcheon, a meeting point with the Meagather. And that was awesome to see, and then we were sharing it, and the gentleman who was sitting with us, and he was Ulsan Broadcasting Company, he thought that was awesome, so we got our interview, and all of us, delegation was on the TV and sharing, to share the Korean War Veterans story at that time, too. And I want this our relationship, made by roses, two cities go on and on. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Okay, last, but not least.
You're here.
Utrecht. My name is Rinder Schutten. I'm the President of the Portland-Utrecht Network. I believe you all know where Utrecht is, is the city in the center of the Netherlands. So in the Netherlands, we have this funny event happening in the beginning of December called Sinterklaas. Like in the U.S., we all know that Sinterklaas come from the North Pole, but Sinterklaas comes from Spain, way different story. I can tell you more about it, but we have to have some beer or something in order to do that. That always happens every year, always a great success for the children because they get some presents as well. We also had a very successful Dutch festival, used to be called King's Festival, but in honesty, we all like the king because we have a party, it's the primary reason. It was very successful this year, every year at Oaks Park, and we have, I think, over 600 people. More and more Americans actually are coming to the party, so that's good. But I really want to talk a little bit more about what we did in terms of celebrating the Stael. The Stael was a cultural happening back in the Netherlands, started in the Netherlands about 100 years ago, and was celebrated all over the Netherlands there, and we last year had the idea to bring that to Portland, exactly what we did. You all will recognize, I guess, the iconic imagery of a mandrill, and probably the chair made by a Dutch architect and furniture maker, Ridveld. So what we did, we brought art history, theater, and public art to Portland. So the first evening that we organized, next slide please, was a nice night at the Portland Art Museum. If you look at the picture on the left, you also see Ms. Udaly over there. She was so nice to actually spend a few, give a few words to introduce the friendship that we have between Portland and Utrecht as well. The guy over there on the right, Mathais, he gave a absolute great introduction in the art movement called the Stael. You may think it's a dry subject, art history. Well, it is not. He made it very lively and very interesting. And yes, we have to thank the Portland Art Museum for donating the Witsel Room, which holds a lot of people, and indeed, we had it filled very nicely with over 200 people. Very successful, very successful event. Next, we had three performances of an amazing woman. She gave a one-woman show. She wrote it, she directed it, and she played it. She played it in the Netherlands many times in Dutch, and then, based on a grant from the city of Utrecht to translate it into English, she did it in English, and that's the Dutch style. It doesn't matter what language it is, we'll probably speak it or we'll do something with it. Great artist at Portland State University at Lincoln Studio Hall, three wonderful evenings. And then the third element is the mural, because as you know, there are many, many murals in Portland already, so we thought to leave something of the Stael in Portland, not just having experiences, but have a physical presence, and that's exactly what we did by creating this mural. We invited a Dutch artist, Menno Anker, to come over, design it, and working with the students of PNCA, who executed it, who painted it, we created this wonderful mural at the corner of Tillamook and 43 in the Hollywood District. And it really livenes up that part of town. In the meantime, there have been actually other murals happening in the same overall area. So I think Hollywood is really becoming a better and better place to be. So those are the three events that we did, and I must actually thank RAC for a grant that they gave us in order to make the mural, together with the city of Utrecht again, very helpful in making it happen. So we are already looking at the after, but you may have seen it before. Yeah, this is blue, but it's kind of boring, so if you go to the next one, you can see actually what we did with that particular corner. It's really very different style mural than you will see typically in Portland, and really exemplifies the Stael of the style, the style of the Stael actually, in Portland, and it will be there for the foreseeable future. So the team that made this happen should be recognized, and that includes myself, but also Gary Parkenstein, Peggy Harkins, and Shireen Farahi, because putting all these three events up is a hell of a lot of work. So after we all did, I went for six weeks to Australia because I had to get out of it. It worked very well, yeah. So thank the team. So what's next? Well, we have done beer events in the past and be doing beer events again, because both Portland and the Utrechters, they all like beer, so we had a photographer coming over. He's shooting, he shot a lot of pictures in various breweries, both in the Netherlands and in Portland, and those will be exhibited at the Brewers Festival in July, so more than welcome to come. And yes, we are working on creating a Portland mural in Utrecht. And yes, Commissioner Fish, we are still thinking of the timbers and FC Utrecht in order to bring some connection in the area of soccer together between the two cities. It's not scheduled yet on the calendar because it's a hard thing to organize, but we'll make it, we'll make it happen, if not next year, the year after. And I know Commissioner Hardesty, you wanted to go everywhere, right?
I do.
Well, Utrecht is a great city, so we welcome you to come to Utrecht as well.
Carla, I'm ready to Netherlands, but I'm ready.
Thank you.
Carla, would you make a note, I've been doing the math, Commissioner Hardesty will be out from September till January, and if we can hold on all the emergency ordinances, and we'll just skip consent, and we'll just manage to bumble along.
I'd be happy to call in for council meetings.
I have to tell you something.
Oh, good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, yeah.
Thanks, Rinder. Thank you very much. Well, thank you all of you for your presentations. This is always a very positive and uplifting experience, and again, I approach this very much the same way Commissioner Hardesty does. It's almost like a travelogue, isn't it? But at a deeper level, it's about creating important ties that are educational, social, and economic with our sister relationships around the globe, and that obviously does not happen without people here who are volunteering countless hours to make it happen. So I really appreciate all the great work that you've done. I'll give my colleagues an opportunity to say whatever they'd like to say.
May I move the report?
Second.
Commissioner Hardesty?
So I moved in. We have second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fish, a second from Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Hardesty.
I just want to say, what an incredible afternoon this has been. First, with the welcome celebration and a recognition of 60 years of sister-city relationships. I am thrilled to be a part of the council and to have been a part of today's activities. Want to thank the staff with the International Office, who did an incredible job of bringing all of us together for this celebration today, and I look forward to the opportunity to move the mayor aside for some of these trips so I can go see for myself what a great job we're doing in building these international relationships. Thank you.
Please call the roll, Carla.
Fish?
This is one of my favorite council presentations. I want to start by acknowledging we've had the leadership of nine sister-city relationships and one friendship city association with us this afternoon, and many of you have been in those leadership roles for a long time, and I can't even imagine the amount of time that you put into this role. This is pure public service, and so let's begin by thanking you for what you do on behalf of our great city and building these relationships. Commissioner Hardesty and I had the great pleasure earlier today of being at the reception, at the formal presentation and then the reception. I think that event keeps getting better, and I particularly appreciated one of the keynote speakers, a woman who was a tribal leader and elder, who came and gave a beautiful speech that put the whole thing into context. And Mayor, thank you for your remarks, and I even enjoyed the comments from the mayor of Sapporo, the pieces I could pick up that weren't translated, of course. But it was a marvelous event, and when we open our doors to the world, as we do each year, we're all better for it. You know, as the Parks Commissioner, I'm especially proud of our world-class gardens that reflect some of these relationships, and the Lansu Chinese Garden, obviously, the Portland Japanese Garden, and the International Rose Test Garden in particular. As everyone here knows, Lansu was built by artisans from Suzhou, and the name of the garden is very special. Lan represents Portland, and Su represents Suzhou, so it's a combination of both words, honoring a deep bond between our two cities. Tomorrow, we'll celebrate 20 years of excellence at the Classical Garden with a special ceremony that I'll have the honor of representing the city at, and our friend Mike Lindberg, who also, apparently who scouted most of these sister-city relationships, but had his particular role with Suzhou, will be present, we'll have a chance to thank him. I'm also excited that tomorrow there'll be a celebration at the International Rose Test Garden. A rose garden bed is being dedicated for our Sapporo sister-city, and of course, we can never forget the craftspeople from Sapporo that came to our city and helped build the great Japanese garden. We here in Portland sometimes take for granted the fact that we have the greatest Japanese garden and Chinese garden, classical Chinese garden, outside of the two countries for which they are known, and that we're the envy of the world for those gardens. Just another example of how we have profited from these sister-city relationships and all that they mean for us. So to each of you who has, who makes these relationships possible, thank you to you and your boards, and thank you for this presentation. And I want to close by thanking Chido, the Director of our International Relations Program. I don't know where she's sitting. She really does a good job, and she was a terrific host over the lunch hour, and it takes a lot of work to organize this, obviously, so thank you for your service, and today's a day to celebrate, and we need more of that during these darker days. So thank you all. I'm pleased to accept your report. Aye.
Hardesty?
I think Commissioner Fish said it all. And so I will only add my thanks to his very detailed thank-yous for the events of today, and just say that I look forward to us strengthening our relationships. I thought the mayor made an excellent point earlier at the reception, that in these times where people are divisive and just mean-spirited and mean to each other, how wonderful that we're a model of how you can extend your hand and create opportunities and friendships that last, and we're going into 60 years. I look forward to the next 60 years strengthening them and making them even better than they are now. I hope that if you take anything from today, is that we're open to having better, longer, more mutually beneficial relationships, and just what happens at the national level does not reflect our perspective or our viewpoints at all. I vote aye.
Fritz?
When I was growing up in England, there was a program called the Children's International Summer Villages, and it was highly competitive. You had to apply to be in it, and then children from all over the world came to stay for a month, and you got to know people from all over the world, and I applied and I didn't get selected, which was crushing, but then I got a consolation prize of having an exchange to Utrecht in the Netherlands, so I got to go there for two weeks, and then the person that we stayed with came back to our house, and that was my first-ever trip abroad. So I feel like I'm here in Portland, this is the People's International Summer Village. So I feel like here in Portland, this is the People's International Summer Village, except it's year-round. People might wonder, you know, why are these particular cities our sister cities, and the answer is because the communities wanted them to be. This is a community-led program, you do the fundraising, you do the organizing, we have a wonderful staff, Chico, thank you, in the Office of Government Relations. This is your program, and it's really great that you come, I know we require you to come, so there's that, but every year, now for 11 years, I've been reminded that, you know, people say we're monocultural here in Portland, you know, we're just all the same, well, we're not. We're from all over, and we have ancestors from all over, and we have ancestors from here, and it's a rich and wonderful program. My son and daughter-in-law were married at Lan Su Chinese Garden, and I was just remembering that the osmanthus tree was purchased for me by my parents, neither of whom are now still on, no, actually, my mom is still here, but she doesn't come to Portland anymore. So there's just so many great things happening, thank you, each and every one of you. Mutari, I'm so happy to hear that you're wondering what to do next, because the orphanage and the school are doing so well, and the health clinic, that's absolutely fabulous. So congratulations to one and all. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I always find this presentation to be very, very uplifting, and I thank everybody for being here today and sharing with us the stories and the good work that you've been doing, and Chido, I wanna express my thanks and my gratitude as well. You've been working very, very hard of late, and it shows, it's paid off. And I also wanna just acknowledge this, Mayor Akamoto, Mayor Akamoto from Sapporo is here today with his sizable delegation. It includes members of his legislative body, and I actually think it makes a great statement to have more of us going on some of these trips, particularly when it's an important milestone year for the relationship. And I was telling Katrina this morning that in many regards, in American culture, we don't appreciate these kinds of relationships as much as others do in other parts of the world. These are very, very important relationships for our sister cities, and it's important that when we go to our sister cities, we honor them in the same way and in kind to the way that they choose to honor us when they come here. And the delegation from Sapporo has over 90 people in it, and it represents scholars, educators, it represents business community people, people from the nonprofit sector, government officials from different agencies, and they take it intensely seriously because they value what is behind the relationships. And so I would actually encourage us to think about broader delegations that include more members of the city council. Plus frankly, I'll rest easier at night knowing you're also with me, and that you're not doing things back here without my knowledge, so I think there's many benefits to it. But again, thanks for all the great work you're doing, and thanks for honoring our community. I vote aye, the report's adopted.
Mayor, Mariana is here to take a picture with us and our honored guests.
Why don't we go ahead and adjourn, and we'll take the photos. Great, thank you.
We'll just come into this area here.